And I will bring up. Script, hopefully you can see that.
Yep. Okay, um, hi, I'm Jean Dimitriades and I'm calling this Back Bay Architecture Commission Violations Committee Public Meeting to order at four thirty PM on December tenth, two thousand twenty five. You can participate in this hearing by going to our Zoom meeting link in our agenda posted online at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot boston dot gov backslash slash public dash notices backslash one six four nine four two five one or by calling three zero one seven one five eight five nine two and entering ID number one six zero eight zero one three two four nine. You can also submit written comments or questions to backbayac at boston.gov. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the opening meeting law, we are conducting this hearing online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Back Bay Architectural Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comments on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use a platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at backbayac at boston.gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person and should be focused on a project's exterior architectural features, which include landscaping. Issues related to use, street traffic and noise are outside of the commission's purview. Okay.
So we can, well, say the violations committee members who are present are Jean Demetriadis, Rob Weintraub, and David Sampson, and we also have Commissioner Tom Hei with us.
Okay, and so our first violation is seventy-two Commonwealth Avenue. Unapproved masonry repairs at front facade. Is someone here?
Yeah, if someone is here for representing seventy-two Commonwealth Avenue, if you could raise your hand and I will make you a co-host. I have not heard from anyone. This address.
Okay.
Okay, again, is anyone here present who is representing seventy-two Commonwealth Avenue? You could raise your hand. All right, we can circle back to them later. I will just, uh, you know, here is what the, um, the violation is the unapproved masonry work that you can see taking place here. There's no building permit that I can find and there is no application submitted to the Back Bay Architectural Commission.
Okay.
Hey Joe, I'm curious, when you send out these notices for violations, do you usually get a response? Or do you just wait for people to show up?
No, I usually get a response right away.
And did you get a response from these guys?
Not from seventy-two Commonwealth Avenue.
Do you want a couple more people joined? Do you want to ask one more time?
Sure, sure. Um, we'll just circle back. Is there anyone here representing seventy-two Commonwealth Avenue? There are, if you could raise your hand.
Okay, so then let's move to, um, one ninety Commonwealth Avenue, unapproved masonry repairs at front facade. Is there anyone representing one ninety Commonwealth? Please raise your hand.
I said, you know, there, um, no, you know, wait a minute, I see someone is writing on.
This was dismissed, wasn't it, Joe?
Yeah, I just want to take care of this, someone that's could be.
Somebody you made a co-host.
Okay, and because they should not be able to use a whiteboard. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so one ninety Commonwealth Avenue, um, there, I think their application in my violation, um, was issued, they kind of crossed paths, so they have, they have submitted an application for an emergency repair and, um, it's consistent with the design guidelines, so, um, this can be dismissed.
Okay, and it's on the admin?
Uh, well, no, it's too, I got it too late to add it to the admin. Um, but I, we probably should, if someone would make a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to dismiss this violation.
I second that.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Great. Right, so next we have four sixteen Marlborough Street. Is there anyone here for four sixteen Marlborough Street? Ah, okay. All right, um, I'd ask you to unmute, who have, if you have your raised, is this Fabio?
Yes, this is Fabio Martini, uh, from Barkin Management, representing four sixteen Marlborough, uh, Association.
All right, is there anyone else? Are you here alone or is there anyone else, um, that you would like me to unmute?
Yes, I'm sure there's, uh, there's, uh, some of the board trustees on this meeting, I believe Penny Chiravino, uh, Jeff Schwartz, Pacan Cerlogo, and, uh, Joe Callahan.
All right, if they, if you could, if you're associated with this, um, condo board, if you could raise your hand and I'll make you all co-hosts so you can participate. In the meantime, um.
I see Penny Chiravino.
Yeah, I think I made her a co-host, she.
So you can unmute. Penny.
And we also, we also have, uh, Michael Murray from Rumpus Engineering, who was the uh, who worked on this project as consultants. So if you could unmute him as well.
Is, does he have a phone number? I don't see his name anywhere.
I don't have his number.
Are they able to raise their hands or?
All right, I don't see Penny, did I lose Penny? Oh, no, there she is.
She is, I she doesn't, she's not unmuting herself.
Okay, um, but she, she'll be able to, um, when, when she, she, if she wants to participate. So I'll just say what this, um, violation it's for. Uh, this lattice wall enclosure that you see here on Marlborough Street, it was erected, um, I found out later to screen it, to screen equipment related to a generator. Um, neither of the installations were reviewed or approved by the Back Bay Architectural Commission. Um, the Inspection Services Department did issue a permit for the work as an, um, electrical permit. Um, so that was not flagged for my review. Um, you know, my recommendation, I think we have two issues now that we have to deal with, so it's the enclosure itself and then it's the equipment that's inside of it. What my recommendation is, um, they really need to explore other options for the location of the equipment, such as inside the building or on the roof. And then after thorough investigation, if other options are not viable, then the equipment uh, should be screened, I would say, with dense evergreen plantings and not this wood right here. So, um, Fabio, if you want to take it from here?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, they did explore every option actually possible because that was the last resource as as a result of no other place, there, uh, as, I'm not sure if you're aware, Mount four sixteen Marlborough does not own any land on the, on the, on the alley or on the side of the building, that is the only place that, uh, they could put this, they could install the triple switch. It's, it's a triple switch for the generator, it has to be, um, it has to be close to the, um, to the tran- uh, transfer switch, which is in the basement, and that's why it can't be on the roof. Um, that, and again, you know, that, that location, that, that is, we, 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 uh, did the research for, for, for the smallest equipment of that size and that was it at the time of the installation. Um, so there's really no, no other option but that, and we, the reason we put that lattice around it is just to, uh, sort of, uh, enhance that same vibe of the neighborhood and, and, you know.
Is there a reason why you didn't make an application like you're supposed to? For the work?
Uh, the, uh, I am not aware, why, it must have been a mishap, probably the, uh, we had Nardoni Electric as the electrical company that installed that, and they should have, uh, built, they should have filled the application for permit. I, um, I am not sure why they didn't, I'm not sure if there was a confusion between the, uh, Back Bay Architectural Design and the permit that they did actually pull. But, you know.
Well, just, I want to point out that the board or the property management company has to sign off on the application. So if you didn't get something to sign off on, that was your clue, they weren't applying for it.
I, I have two questions. How high is the generator and what is the need for the generator?
The genera- the generator is per code, it, it has to be there, I, uh, send, I, I, I send the information to, uh, to Joseph, uh, I believe Monday or Friday, um, which was sent by the, which was sent by, uh, Mike Murray at, um, Rumpus Engineering, so we have, you have to have that in case the generator goes out, then the triple switch generator goes on and, 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 you know, then you have power.
Oh, why do you mean it?
I don't think you're answering the.
Or when the generator.
There wasn't a generator, a need for a generator before, so why is there a need for one now? I think that's the question.
The generator has always been there. So we had a generate, we had to rebuild the generator and per code, you have to have a triple switch in case the generator goes out or when they do the testing for the generator, the triple switch will go on. And that's per code, it's not a choice.
Four sixteen.
And there was a generator in this location before?
Yeah, is.
Yes, there is, the genera- the generator is on the roof.
The, so the generator was on the roof and this is the new generator or this is just the transfer?
This is just a triple switch.
Oh, okay, so it's not that high then, how high is it?
I would say it's probably about six, um, uh, five, six feet maybe.
Do you have a photo?
Yes, I sent the photo in as well.
Joe, Joe, do we have a photo of what's behind this screen?
Yeah, let me see if I can bring that up. I think I only have one of the screen, but there was, if you looked, I, um, shared with you some public comment. If you look at the public comment email that I sent out, a neighbor had sent some images of the generator, of the switch before. Can't be on the inside of the building. I understand why the generator can't be on the inside of the building, the transfer switch can.
Yeah, this is the transfer switch.
Most transfer switches are in, in the inside of a building.
We don't have a place to put.
There's no room.
There is no room in the building for that now.
And this is that building on the corner of Mass Ave and Marlborough, four sixteen. Yes, yes. So the generator is required for high-rise codes that are over seventy feet. So it makes sense that they have a generator. And did you, how do you, you had a transfer switch in that location before?
No, there was no transfer switch when, when, when the generator was installed originally, but now there's code that you have to have the triple switch for the generator.
There must have been a transfer switch at some point, probably just one, one switch as opposed to three. All right, well, they're going to have to apply to the Architectural Commission. And I, I agree with Joe, um, screening this with plants.
Uh, we do, we do plan to put, we, in, in, uh, in the spring, we will plant some, 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 some greenery and, and, and make it look even nicer than it would, what it does now, but it is, it, it really is a nice rustic wood looks.
No, but we don't want the rustic wood look.
No.
The lattice work is inappropriate.
Right, you're drawing more attention to it. You're going to have to apply to the BBAC on a formal application and consult the Back Bay Garden Club as to what type of screening materials would be appropriate for this switch.
Uh, we can, we can put, we can put hanging greenery around it and make it all green if that's what.
No, I'm not, I'm not sure what's appropriate, but, um, I, I'm ready to make a motion. I still have to say, I, I'm, I'm not fully convinced that this can't go inside.
Yeah, I'm not either, because I don't, I don't understand how it suddenly is outside if they've had a generator all this time.
They had to have a transfer switch in the interior of that building. Although the code has been revised and now requires a triple transfer switch.
Right, so why couldn't that be where the original transfer switch was?
It's probably much bigger and I, I don't, I don't know. What's in the basement of, of four sixteen? Are there condo units down there?
There's one unit and a lot of electrical rooms, but none of them could fit the switch.
Yeah, I don't.
They looked at that.
I'll have to take your word for it, I don't, you know, without looking at it, I couldn't tell you. Um, ideally, on the inside of the building would, would be ideal, if, if that's not possible. But a letter from.
It is not possible, we explored those options and we tried, but there is really no room inside that building for that triple switch.
Well, I think you need to provide more documentation of that.
Yeah, I think when you, when they, when they come back for a review, that first of all, I'd like to see what's behind this lattice. And then give us a reason why we can't get it inside. And then if we can't get it inside, then let's consult the garden club on how to, how to properly, um, hide this thing.
That's pretty much what my motion is going to be, and also a letter from the electrical.
So would, would, would a letter from the, would a letter from the, uh, from the company that installed it be efficient as?
No.
Well, no. A letter from the electrical engineer stating that there's no, that they investigated the interior portion of the ba- of the basement in the, or the, or the building. And there is no, there is, there's no possibility that this could be relocated on the inside as there's not enough room to hold the equipment. Something to that effect from the electrical engineer, um, not the generator company, but the, an electrical engineer.
Engineer.
Yeah.
Key word, engineer.
Yeah.
Yep, we have him.
We did have, like I said, we did have the, uh, Rumpus Engineering, which is, was our consultant, and they are electrical engineers. Those are the ones that determine that, that it can't go anywhere else but there.
Right, can you get a letter from them as part of your application when you apply?
Okay, we, we can do that. Yep.
I would just say that it probably should, since it's a violation, it probably should be continued as a review by the violations committee, that's probably what we do.
With re- with review by us, the violations and then, and then back to the committee, Joe?
No, it would, it, it would be resolved, it would be resolved by the violations, by you all, the violations committee.
Right now, okay.
Not right now, when they come back.
Not, yeah, when they, yeah, right, I mean, it's, it sounded like you're wanting them to come back with some more information.
We'll work with Joseph to get the information if we need.
Jean, do you want to open it up for public comment?
Yeah, okay. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use a platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at backbayac at boston.gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person and should be focused on a project's exterior architectural features, which include landscaping. Issues related to use, street traffic and noise are outside of the commission's purview. I believe us, Serge was the first one to raise his hand.
Serge?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, uh, good, good evening, Commissioner and Joe and everyone. Uh, thank you for allowing me to, to speak here, I'll, I'll be a little bit longer than normal because I want to correct a lumber of false uh, things that were said about this installation. Number one, this is not a generator, it's a triple switch. It's a, a triple switch is not a transfer switch. The transfer switch is used to switch the generator between the power, between the generator and the main, uh, line that's coming from the utilities. This is a triple switch, this is used to do the maintenance of a generator or to connect an external generator that would be parked on the street instead, instead of connecting the main generator. This is used typically to do maintenance. And most of these in the Back Bay are insta- are installed inside the building. Because these are, there's actually no restriction to put that inside the building. The only thing is if a parking, a, a truck is parked outside to be able to connect the generator, they need to pass the wire through a window. Usually the window that is the closest or through doors to do that. But this is not a, uh, a, an equipment that needs to be outside. Second thing, it's very concerning that first, the information that was related is not accurate. But on top of it, that this is a condo that is, knows what the rules are for the Back Bay and should have applied for a permit, nothing that something was being installed in the, i- on, on the outside of the property, number one. Number two, there should have been also a, 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 a request, the BBAC, for the screening. So I truly believe that this needs to be followed carefully by the commission. The, the staff of the commission should be allowed to go on premises to review the, the space and review the installation. And an electrical engineer should also qualify, uh, the, the room. I have right now very little confidence that this was done properly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Serge, I believe, uh, Matt has his hand raised.
Matt, you should be able to mute yourself.
Mute, oh, there I am. Uh, my name is Matthew Lena, I live at four oh three Marlborough. Um, I, everything Serge said is exactly on point. Um, I really want to emphasize the importance of the commission. Um, not just accepting facially some engineer's statement that, you know, there is no room. Of course there's room. It, you know, it's just a matter of the building may have to give up something it doesn't want to give up, some storage space or something else. Or rearrange some equipment in existing electrical or the, the fire pump room in order to make room. Or define more compact equipment that's more carefully matched to the needs, to the, to the capacity required. This has all the earmarks of a path of least resistance that someone said, well, we could just do it, you know, it's hard to do it inside, so we can just do it out here. And if this were an industrial park, no problem, but this is not an industrial park. So, you know, I, 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 I think the, the, especially given that this is being inevitably will be, you know, have some inertia as a fait accompli. I think the commission needs to hold the applicant's feet to the fire to prove that it cannot be done inside. To be honest, without regard to cost. If the, the cost of doing it and the fact that they've invested a hundred thousand dollars already in something completely inappropriate is not the commission's or the neighbor's business. I've, I have a fifty-year career as a computer engineer, I've built many computer rooms, data centers, I know all about this stuff. And when something needs to be fit, you can make it fit. We're all right now paying visually and in our property values for basically laziness on the part of somebody. And so again, I, I, I urge the commission to hold the applicant's feet to the fire on this question of putting it inside. I guarantee you, it can be fit inside one way or another.
Okay, uh, thank you, Matthew. And there's someone at phone number eight five seven four four five one 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 two.
I'll also just say Matthew had, um, submitted written comment that I shared with the commissioners.
Yes.
Now, I believe this is, um, Vinod, and I think you're here for the next application, is that correct? Is that why you have your hand raised, or for seventy-two Commonwealth Avenue? Okay, all right, so we'll circle back to you when we go back to seventy-two Commonwealth Avenue.
Okay, so is there someone else? I thought I saw another hand up briefly.
Jeanette, I wonder if I could just ask a question.
Sure.
The, uh, discussion has focused on storage of the, or location of the equipment inside, which is the most appropriate. But I'm wondering whether, um, it is feasible to create a vault, uh, underground, um, which would eliminate the visibility exactly where it's located now, but down in, in the ground. We've done vaults, uh, for generators, I believe, for commercial buildings, um, and that might be another option that should be explored.
Thanks, that's a good suggestion.
Great suggestion, Tom.
Yeah, because I, I, my concern is that I feel like they knew they were supposed to make an application, chose not to do it. So I feel like there's a trust factor involved here now, too.
Right. All right, uh, I see Zoom user, um, if you could give us your full name. Zoom user, give us your full name.
This is Sue Prindle, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
My, my computer is off, but my laptop is working. Um, yeah, I just wanted to point out that evidently there's a change in the code and there's going to be a lot of this kind of thing replied for in the, throughout the district, so I think it's very, very important to be careful with this one. Uh, it could be a very nasty precedent. Thanks. Same. Okay, so no one else's hands are raised, right?
That's all we have for public comment on this one.
Okay.
Uh, so my motion is to continue this violation so that the applicant has a chance to go back to their electrical engineer, um, to get a affidavit or a letter stating that there is no room in the building. I would also suggest that, um, Joe and, and a member of the violations committee visit the lower level of four sixteen Marlborough to confirm the engineer's findings. And I'll, I'm happy to volunteer myself, uh, for that, uh, investigation. Um, Tom Heis, uh, suggestion of a vault, which I've done in the past, although not cheap, is an excellent suggestion. So if there is no room, there is, uh, four sixteen does have a, a big garden, um, and there's plenty of room for an electrical vault. Uh, so my motion is to continue and for staff to work with the applicant to come back to the commission with a, uh, a viable alternative that meets the guidelines of the Back Bay Architectural Commission.
The second that.
Agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good.
And Robert, thanks for volunteering.
Penny and, um, Fabio will be in touch to, um, talk about next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we can move back to seventy-three Commonwealth Avenue.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, sorry. And
Okay, so back to seventy-two with the unapproved masonry repairs and we have someone here, correct?
Yeah, that's going to find. Okay, you should be able to mute yourself now.
Oh, hi, this is Vinod from seventy-two Commonwealth Avenue, Boston. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I tried logging in from a Zoom, I was there, I was kicked out and I'm not able to log in again through my Zoom, but anyway, I'm on my phone.
Okay, so if you can, you know, explain what, what work you've done here, obviously without a building permit or without the approval of the Back Bay Architectural Commission, specifically here, we're looking at the screen at the front facade, there's obviously masonry work that's happened without our approval.
Yeah, um, uh, thanks Joseph and thank, um, everyone in the, um, in the meeting. Um, sorry, I ca- I cannot read the names, uh, but anyway, uh, we started off, uh, cleaning the, uh, you know, the gutters and the, and the, um, and the windows. That's where, that's what it was intended for, um, and, but the workers, they found out that there are some, some things which they want to scrape off. So while scraping off, they found out that, oh, um, you know, some, uh, some of the, eh, you know, the walls, we thought that like maybe, um, some places they thought they should, they should pass it up. And then that ended up to, uh, to this, whatever you see right now. So we did not meant to do, to do this kind of stuff, but it happened, you know, um, in the, uh, you know, on a, with an intention to, uh, you know, to not to hurt anyone if somebody's walking into the road, that's, that's why, that's how we can see right now. So we did not want to do, do that. I'm, I'm sorry, Joseph and, uh, and members. And I, I know this is, is looking right now, it's, it's looking, um, patchy and also, um, uh, in a white and it's not, it's unpainted. Um, the only thing what I think is that to, to repair or, and to bring it back again, uh, how it was, maybe we need to just, uh, just paint it. Um, I was anyway thinking of going, uh, going through you, uh, Joseph and, and the, uh, uh, historical uh, committee and just to, uh, you know, paint it and, uh, and bring it back again whole, whole bunch.
Oh, I, I don't know that painting it is the appropriate thing to do.
No. Yeah.
I'm, uh, I'm ready to make a motion whenever we've had discussion.
Okay.
Uh, this is, I mean, this is a pretty egregious violation, I don't know exactly what's going on there, but it doesn't look like repointing. It looks like somebody tried to s- and apply stucco to historic brick to the historic brick facade. Now, painting the brownstone windows is, is appropriate with a color that is consistent with the guidelines, but the, the brick by, by no means, that building should be staged, covered and pointed, uh, appropriately after they've applied to the Back Bay Architectural Commission and received a certificate of design approval and gotten a permit from the building department. Uh, nothing less will suffice.
I agree.
You want to open up the public comment?
Okay, members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use a platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at backbayac at boston.gov. or you can send your questions to staff via email at backbayac@boston.gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person and should be focused on a project's exterior architectural features, which include landscaping. Issues related to use, street traffic and noise are outside the commission's purview. And Serge has his hand up? I think you're unmuted. You can speak.
But Serge, you don't have any comments?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
We can hear you. Do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. Uh, one thing that we did notice when we looked at seventy two, uh, Marl Marlboro is it seems that the repair or the work that's been done right now has removed historical details that were on the building. There is a lot of details, uh, in the strings and in the, uh, the ornaments that were there that were lost. I think it would be important that not only this goes to the commission, but the commission makes sure that these details are appropriately done when they will be, uh, restored. Thank you.
Not seeing any other public comment. Any other hands? Oh, we have one, Kate. Kate, to give us your name, you can, uh, unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Kate Romerella. I am a neighbor of seventy two Commonwealth, a couple of doors down. I wanted to just applaud the commission, uh, you know, this group for bringing this violation to light and to taking action on it. Um, although I do applaud the owners of seventy two for, uh, taking initiative for repairs and upkeep. They have been, you know, spending some capital in repairing their roof and, uh, their front steps and other things. I do agree with this group in my concern relative to the fact that they are doing this. Uh, typically on the weekends, my guess is that the contractor that they have chosen may not be a licensed contractor, and they're not following, uh, the the, uh, you know, the the laws as well as as the, um, uh, the Architectural Commission and, uh,
Guidelines.
Guidelines, thank you. Couldn't think of the word. So, uh, my hope is that they will bring this to resolution and bring it back to code uh, in a way that is aesthetically pleasing and appropriate. Uh, because it doesn't just impact them, it impacts the entire block. And everyone on this block of Commonwealth between Berkeley and Clarendon takes great pride in our, uh, properties and, uh, certainly don't want this to potentially impact those property values. Thank you.
Joe, have you received any applications for any of the other work that's referenced? Okay, so.
Yeah, I just I just checked my index, and there hasn't been any application since nine, since twenty twenty two, and there was just one then. And then before that, it was five years earlier, so.
Yes, all the work being done has been done. Okay. Well, that's a big problem. So any other hands up?
Not seeing any others.
Okay, so Robert, were you making the motion or?
My motion is to continue the violation to give the applicant the opportunity to come back and then apply to the Back Bay Architectural Commission with, uh, an appropriate licensed contractor and a design which is consistent with the, uh, Back Bay Architectural Commission's guidelines.
Um, I would also suggest that they outline what work they've already done so that we can, Joe can check that as well.
Right. Thank you. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right. So I'll be in touch with you.
And you should stop the work immediately, obviously.
Of course it stopped. Yeah, it's not. We are not looking anymore.
Okay, and then.
We have one more violation, uh, three forty five Beacon Street.
Anyone here from three forty five Beacon Street?
I believe I saw Sharon Goldberg. All right, if you're here, Sharon, are you here? She was here and then she left.
Yeah, she's still here. I see her there.
She's a co-host.
Yeah, I see her, yeah. She's a co-host.
So you should be able to speak, Sharon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here with my husband, Ted.
Okay, so I'll just, um, walk you through with the the violation here. Um, unapproved masonry work at the front facade and unapproved removal of tree and landscape work at the front garden. Um, so here is a street view before work has taken place. Um, this is the property and this is the tree, which I believe was a linden tree, which was removed. And here is what we have today. So masonry work has taken place. It's a mismatch, um, the building itself of some painted masonry, some unpainted masonry. Um, they started painting here at the lower level. Um, I don't believe that color would be appropriate. It looks like it's a little too much on on the brown side. Um, but more critically, they have paved over the garden area where the tree had been.
Did you not understand that you have to make an application?
We were, um, we we just, uh, just a couple of things going on that I want you guys to fully understand. So we moved in, uh, end of August, and we've been dealing with a major flood. We had a detached, uh, lateral sewer line, um, that Boston Water and Sewer um, uh, completed. Um, the 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 sewer line was detached for a year and a half, resulting in a major sewage issue and an ongoing lawsuit. So, so what we're dealing with is, um, we had an emergency situation where we had to do some work outside. We just moved to the area end of August and were completely unaware of the fact that we were not allowed to paint the structure. Uh, as far as the 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 removing of the tree, we hired somebody, uh, we figured it was on our property. We hired somebody. He said, I'm gonna get you a permit to remove the tree. He showed up, um, and then we continued to have water. And at that point, A and S Site, the company, first I hired the tree guy, and then A and S Site took over and said, I will get you the permit, um, from Department of Public Works. So he came back. He never showed me the permit. He just came back and he said, we're all set, and I said, perfect. And so he said, we're gonna take the tree down. Um, I didn't know that the that the permit, um, specified only pruning. I was not aware of that. Takes the tree down. They do all kinds of work outside with pipes to deflect the water away from the building. Um, we we have all kinds of videos as well as pictures of that. And then after that was done, there was already pavers there before as well as granite, uh, pavers. So we figured, you know, we're just gonna mimic what's next door and just put herringbone brick down to cover the area, uh, of the dirt that was there. And so that's where we stand. As far as the particular color of the building, we spoke to, we walked around the area to try and mimic other buildings. We spoke to Warren's Painting, um, in Tremont. We also spoke to a particular, um, Benjamin Moore Store on Newbury Street. Both indicated some different colors that would work for the Back Bay Historical Commission. And we followed them when we selected a color called Middlebury Brown. Um, and we started the job, and it was getting very, very cold. We were about to complete it. And, um, the commission told us to stop. Uh, we didn't want to stop. We had maybe, you know, four or five hours to go to make it look half decent. And we stopped, and now we have this ugly facade that we're embarrassed about, not not knowing that we couldn't paint. Um, so that's really the story. Um, there's some pipes underground now in that front area to deflect water. Um, we're still in a battle with Boston Water and Sewer, um, about the whole situation. Um, we have their claims department on notice. I have an attorney. Um, and that's the story. We want to make everybody happy, and we want, uh, obviously, we have a lot of money invested in this building, and we want it to look awesome, and that's our goal, but we were totally unaware of this. Um, the situation, so we're we're happy to help accommodate.
Well, you're in a historic district, and so you can do no work without making an application. So for future reference, you're not allowed to just work on something without making the application to the historic commission.
Okay.
The Architectural Commission.
Tree removal specifically is a hot button issue within the Architectural District. Um, and under rare circumstances, uh, will allow a removal of a tree uh, for a lateral replacement, but with the understanding that you'll replace that tree with a like kind tree or a tree that is recommended by the Back Bay Garden Club upon completion of doing the work. Uh, but you'd have to prove to us that the sewer line was was in the way of of, uh, of the tree roots.
Well, now we have concern based on the PVC that's out there. See, it's hard to explain. There's a lot of information here. We, at first, we were gonna put in two sump pumps to deflect the water away. That was the original plan. Um, and like I said, this was all on emergency basis. Um, we continued to have water maybe four or five times. Um, so basically, they were gonna do two sump pumps, and that was the idea. So there are some, there's a a dry well out there right now, and there's some PVC piping. I've heard from different people, different situations. I know you guys wanted some kind of, uh, plant or tree put back. Different people have told me that I have to be concerned now that a tree trunk eventually will degrade the PVC pipe. Now, I don't know enough about that to know if that's really true or not. But obviously, you know, I want to do what's gonna make you guys happy. Uh, at the same time, you know, there's some other issues there. Obviously, you know, um, the architecture is so beautiful that we wanted to be able to see it. Um, you know, we're on the darker side of beacon. We didn't want leaves, um, clogging up the, you know, the drain line. Um, the the tree was deteriorating, the property. There's there's numerous things going on, but the main reason why we moved forward was the emergency um, situation, which we're still in the middle of.
Right.
So, one question that I have, you know, and I'm sure the neighbors are not happy, um, is it's very cold right now, and I'm sure nobody loves looking at this, you know, concrete, you know, white repair material that's out there is, do we have the ability, if it were to get warmer, to roll that before spring, um, just to make it look half decent? I mean, it looks horrible now.
Well, you have to, you know, we're we're gonna continue this violation so that you come back with an application that meets the guidelines. Um, if the weather permits, you can get an emergency authorization from Joe's office to to clean up the facade. Uh, but that's only after, I don't see an emergency here now, so, um, it's only after you've submitted an application and had it approved by the Architectural Commission that you can proceed. Did you, has the sewer line been replaced?
Yes.
Right, so the flooding in your basement is not related to the sewer line. You have groundwater.
Well, no, well, no, it it's actually the the sewer line is still attached to that front drain.
It was a combined.
It was a combined line. So now they separate, well, they also have, they also took the leader off the side of the building to try and deflect water, um, underground, so we wouldn't have this problem again. But, um, you know, we'll see what happens. We haven't put in any, any final, uh, flooring yet. Um, but, um, we applied for a permit for the basement to complete that um, a couple, about a week ago, and, uh, here we are, so, um.
And you're working with a qualified general contractor now? And have you always been working with a GC?
Yeah.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, so I think we can do public comment then?
Sure, yeah. Let me bring up, there's a script.
Okay, members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use a platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at backbayac@boston.gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person and should be focused on a project's exterior architectural features, which include landscaping. Issues related to use, street traffic and noise are outside of the commission's purview. And I believe Serge has his hand raised?
Yes, uh, uh, good evening again. I I just realized, forgot to mention, I'm Sir Savar, co-chair of the Architecture Committee for, uh, the, uh, the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. Uh, I'm very, uh, uh, if, you know, I'm a little bit sorry for the new, uh, neighbors that we have here that having issues with, uh, with this project. Uh, I think, uh, in case that we didn't need some guidance, uh, the bad, uh, the Neighborhood Association would be happy to give them some guidelines or ga- on guidelines and, uh, the process. If they are new to the neighborhood, and we can definitely help them here navigate the system. But if I understand well, it seems that the the there was a new patio that was basically put, but it looks like there's still water issues somewhere. So it could be that this patio that is there will be removed in in which case then a, uh, a new landscaping plan should probably be, uh, drafted and then reviewed to, uh, to handle the 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 water issue. Then for the exterior, I think, uh, the best thing, uh, may be, uh, in my view to to look a little bit at the condition and see, uh, what is the appropriate treatment for this. And maybe Joe could, uh, could suggest exactly what the, uh, what the best treatment would be for that, uh, for that place. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Serge. I think Lori Thomas had her hand raised next.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lori Thomas. I'm also co-chair of the NAB Architecture Committee and co-chair of the Tree Committee for the Garden Club of the Back Bay. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Goldberg, welcome to Back Bay. You're in a historic neighborhood that is as beautiful as it is because the people who are at this meeting today are, um, are working so hard to keep it preserved. Um, I'm I'm here basically to talk about the tree. Um, if that had been a street tree that had been damaged by plumbing issues or any other kind of pipework, um, you would have been assessed at five hundred and fifty dollars per caliber inch. And according to our inventory that you can see on backbaytrees.org, the combined caliber or diameter of that tree was something like sixty some inches. So we are looking at a tw- at least a twenty thousand dollar, um, fine for if that had been a street tree. So I think you, that will help you understand how much we value trees here, particularly trees that are larger and have a big canopy. So I would strongly recommend and 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 on behalf of the Tree Committee, advocate for replacing that tree with another single stemmed, good canopy tree, um, another linden, which is a flowering tree, would be ideal. Um, there is a silver linden that I think is the tree we would highly recommend. So we would be very happy to work with both, um, the BBAC and with you to ensure that you have the right tree there. If we had known this was happening, we could have talked to your contractors about all the ways that we know to protect trees during these kinds of excavations, because that is often possible. So, um, thank you for for listening, and, um, I hope you'll, um, take a look at the, um, the Neighborhood Association's website and the Garden Club's website and learn about us because we're here to help you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lori, and Alice Murphy has her hand raised.
You able to mute yourself?
Yeah, okay, got it. Um, thank you for, um, letting me speak. Um, I'm also on the Architecture Committee, um, and I just wanted to take this opportunity because it's a perfect one um, for just suggesting, um, that we really should think, uh, more generally about how to prevent these things from happening. Um, if indeed these new arrivals knew nothing of the guidelines, then I've I've been trying to scout out the idea that, um, people, when they sign documents buying in the Back Bay, should just sign a, you know, disclaimer or whatever it's called, you know, saying that they have, they are aware that the guidelines exist and they've read them. And even if their lawyer signs it or whatever, I've been told all sorts of reasons why we shouldn't make people do this. But I think it would really help because for people who genuinely would like to know, um, they would just be saying, yes, I know I'm signing up for a historic district, and it would kind of stop things upstream from happening like this. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, Robert, are you ready to make a?
Yes. My motion is to continue this violation to give the applicant, uh, enough time to come back with a sufficient, uh, landscaping and tree replacement. with a sufficient uh, landscaping and tree replacement plan uh, as well as a sufficient uh, masonry restoration plan with um, uh, by uh, by a licensed general contractor.
Second.
Right.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And I'll just add one thing here, Joe, before you go. Mr. And Mrs. Goldberg, I think the the people that offered their help here are very um, uh, valuable resources that I think will um, help you through the stressful part of this whole thing and we recognize it as a stressful thing and especially because you're a new neighbor here, but those people are valuable resources and I think if we reach out to Joe, he'll be happy to give you their phone numbers um, and keep us on.
Joe, it looked like someone had raised their hand just as we were doing the motion. Was it Matthew again or a different Matthew?
Matthews, a a quick comment?
Yeah, real quick. I just wanna say, you know, the idea of notifying new purchasers of the requirements and so on is one I've thought of for a long time and it's a great one. But I I want to point out, it's really not necessary to make it a formal requirement that someone acknowledge and make it part of the closing and so on. Obviously, the 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 authority of the commission and the requirement to have review and apply for applications is there no matter what, whether they acknowledge it or not. So I think to achieve the goal we want um, only requires simply that that the commission or even NAB somehow get a list of new owners and simply mail out an informative brochure. And there's no need for some formality or a sign off by anyone. I think that would achieve the goal in a much simpler way. That's all I wanted to say.
Hey, thank you. So um, violations committee, do we have um, someone make a motion to um, adjourn the violations committee and then we'll go right to design review? I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Third.
All right, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so now we can turn it over to our chair Kathy Connor. Kathy, I believe you're here.
Yes, I am. Yes. Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. Glad to hear. Okay. I'm ready, Joe, whenever.
You're ready.
I'm ready. I don't see the uh, oh, thank you. Now I see it. Thank you. I'm calling together this Back Bay Architectural Commission Public Hearing to Order at five twenty-two on December tenth, twenty twenty-five. You may participate in this hearing by going to our Zoom meeting link in our agenda posted online at HTTPS www.boston.gov. Public notices, one six four nine four two five one, or by calling three oh one seven one five eight five nine two and entering ID number one six oh eight oh one three two four nine. You may also submit written comments or questions to backbayac@boston.gov. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we're conducting this hearing online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Back Bay Architectural Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you may press star nine to raise your hand, or you may send your questions to staff via email at backbayac@boston.gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person and should be focused on a project's exterior architectural features, which includes landscaping. Issues related to use, street traffic and noise are outside of the commission's purview.
Okay, so the commissioners that we have present, we have Kathy Connor, Gina Demetriades, Rob Weintraub, David Sampson, Tom High, Tom Viner, Zizana Gasparr, Franklin Ross, and Lisa Tharp. Have I missed any commissioners? No. All right, Kathy, I guess our our first agenda item is the ratification of minutes from October eighth, twenty twenty-five and November twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Wonderful. Do we have someone who would like to make a motion to accept those?
Motion to accept?
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay.
Who was that?
That Rob.
Rob, okay. All right, Kathy Connor?
Yes.
Gina Demetriades?
Yes.
Rob Weintraub?
Yes.
David Sampson?
Yes.
Tom High?
Yes.
Tom Viner? Tom V, make sure you're unmuted.
Uh, yes, sorry, I was trying to mute, unmute myself from the phone. Yes.
Great, okay. And Zizana Gasparr?
Yes.
Franklin Ross?
Yes.
And Lisa Tharp?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, our first project, uh, go, go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, yes, uh, we have our first application, twenty-six point oh four nine nine BB, eighteen Commonwealth Avenue um, at rear parking court that straws to your steel gate. Is there someone here from eighteen Commonwealth Avenue, please?
See. Let's see. David Freed, are you here? David or Frazier? Frazier Allen? Look, here's a David. Uh, okay. All right, David, I made your co-host. There you are.
Great, great. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, my name's David Freed. I'm an architect at Schuyn Company and um, uh, I am uh, happy to to uh, take you through our drawings um, uh, for a um, uh, rear a gate in our uh, rear drive court.
Did Joe?
Thanks, David. Joe, Joe's gonna go through the staff notes.
Read my staff comment?
Yeah.
Um, staff notes that uh, the commission approved the garage and parking court in twenty twenty-four. Um, staff recommends approval, finding that the proposed gate is consistent with the design guidelines for the residential area of the district. Um, I, you know, I know there was some public comment um, in favor of doing a more ornamental gate. Uh, I steer them in the direction of a more um, utilitarian gate because it is an alley, a service alley. Um, so I think we'll probably have some discussion about that. Um, so David, do you want to share your screen or do you want me to move forward with?
Oh, I'm happy to share my screen. Thank you.
Oh, okay, here I'll stop sharing. Oops.
Can you all see that?
Not yet. Hold on, let me.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, David, yes, we see your screen.
Okay, um, great, thank you. So um, just to familiarize everyone, um, uh, our project is eighteen Com Ave and we're between um, uh, Berkeley Street and Arlington Street, uh, where this uh, uh, pin is. Let me go to the next slide. Um, we have a couple of views of the drive court. Uh, the left view is looking towards the the existing building and the right view is looking back towards the church uh, that about some, uh, the fronts on Boilstein Street. And then there are a couple of views up and down the alley. Um, the alley is actually quite busy down at the Arlington Street end, uh, where the uh, the hotel and residences are. They get deliveries quite often as you all know. So um, our plan here is to um, build a couple brick piers that would house the mechanics of the actual um, uh, system that would operate the gate. And and then uh, the gate would actually be attached to those piers as well. Um, they would be set back a foot from uh, the property line to um, um, help with maneuverability into and out of the drive court. Um, and the gate would actually um, be a feature, we think, a positive thing for the yard. Um, in the sense that if if the owners had had kids, they would have some enclosure and um, a bit of security uh, as well as maybe security for any any vehicles that might be there parked. Uh, this is a view of that uh, gate is seen from the alley. Let me go back. I'm sorry, one second. So the idea here of the piers is, uh, besides setting them back, we've also chamfered the corners uh, to um, increase maneuverability.
Oh, this will be. What's the width of those pillars?
Um, they are uh, one foot four wide and they're two foot, two foot deep. And then here are um, some elevations, large elevations. So uh, the alley side shows here are brick piers with the chamfered corners. Uh, we would have uh, maybe a um, a granite block base to match the the trim work, the 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 curving and everything along the alley and maybe a base cap, uh, a cap that would match our cast stone on the front. Uh, these would be steel, black painted gates. Uh, we have a middle rail here that would hide the actual actuator arm. And then the top drawing here is the courtyard elevation and you can see sort of the the mechanics of the arm here to be peeking through um, visible from the alley side. And then to our left at the lower is our side elevation. And um, this box would um, house the um, um, the control box that's required to uh, operate the arm. That would be black painted metal. Uh, here's a enlarged plan of that. Um, so the piers would be hollow. This blue box represents the actual um, the box, the control box. Um, number two would be the the opening where we have our um, access panel. Three is the brick pier and then four is the actual actuator arm. And uh, this is drawn to scale that shows how the mechanics of of the operation of this. And then um, I I, I didn't have a, an SUV, but I did have a Chevy Silverado uh, four door pickup, which is actually a little bit bigger than like a Chevy Tahoe. So um, here I'm showing how that would be able to enter the um, the drive court. There is a uh, light pole um, a little bit to the west of our um, drive court. So on our next slide, this would be a a version of that vehicle backing in and uh, we just clear that. Uh, those were comments that came up with NAB and so I I made some adjustments based on their comments uh, to make this a bit more um, workable. Uh, we got a quote from um, uh, Patriot Fence for the installation of this. It's roughly about forty thousand dollars. Uh, that doesn't include the piers. That's just for the the gate and the upper, 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 the uh, mechanism. And um, and then these are the cut sheets of that product.
David?
Um.
Just a couple of questions. Um, you're uh, I, first of all, let me say that I think that the gate is a good idea. I like the way that you've modified it from the earlier drawings that were posted um, by moving it back a bit so that it's a more maneuverable. Um, have you had a chance to look at the butter letter sent by um, Tim and Dell Mitchell? Because um, it strikes me, although I understand Joe's thought of keeping it simple since it's a commercial alley, those of us who live on the commercial alleys have been trying to sort of not over decorate, but at least improve a little bit the appearance of the rear yards and the rear gates and so forth. And I thought uh, what what um, the Mitchells had proposed uh, made some sense. Uh, did you have a reaction to that?
I I didn't see that letter. I don't believe I received that. Um, if I did, I apologize, but um, I certainly.
Just, I may have just come because uh, Joe sent it out this this afternoon.
Yeah, it it just arrived last night, so I didn't share it with the applicant.
Yeah, I the original scheme I did send in to Joe for for review and and just some feedback, um, incorporated the cast iron um, panels that we're using on the um, uh, the roof deck um, uh, guardrail as well as the uh, the fence in the front yard. Um, Joe thought that was a bit too ornate, so um, uh, I dialed back the design to be a bit more utilitarian as as he mentioned. Uh, I'm happy to revisit that.
Yeah, I don't know whether, Joe, you can call up the photograph, the the or call up the letter or whether the Mitchells are here, but um, it seems to me that if you can, yeah, there's a, we need to strike a balance between over ornate, which I agree is not appropriate, and something that is just a little bit more um, uh, appropriate, I think, for a residential uh, alley, even though it does face a commercial side of the street. Um, they had proposed a different design for the gate and also um, modification to the tops of the piers, uh, so that they had a little bit more heft and shape. I don't know whether other members of the commission had a chance to to look at that letter or not or have a reaction.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Tom. Um, the gate is a little institutional. Um, it uh, it it, you could come up with a gate that's more consistent with other gates um, and ironwork in the Back Bay. And I think of a bluestone, you know, a three or four inch bluestone cap on top of that pier would probably be appropriate with the granite base. Um, but you know, Dell's email makes reference to the, the style of the gate. Um, and I agree with her. It's it's institutional. Would would your client be amenable to looking at alternative designs that are more consistent with the architectural district?
Oh, yes. Yes. Um, I think we would, rather than uh, bluestone, um, Rob, we would maybe prefer to do the uh, the cast stone, the brownstone cast stone on top to relate back to the um, um, the front of the building.
All right, with photographs, that would be.
I don't, would we, would it be possible to put lamp posts on top of those?
I was just gonna ask you if you had any lighting design to go with this.
Um, we had thought about it, but I didn't know that was something we could get approved, so we didn't show that. Because it wasn't, you know, period or appropriate at the time, right?
Well, neither, neither is a gate. It's to a certain extent. Joe, the uh, they put lanterns on top with uh, I, I, I mean, I don't know that that would be appropriate for the alley. I I don't know of any other installations like that that I can think of.
I think there may be one at one twenty-eight Commonwealth, um, but it is, would be quite unusual.
Okay. So maybe it's best to continue this application to come up with a design of of the gate that would be more appropriate?
You can probably send that to to Joe, to staff.
Joe, is that something that could approve administratively? Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, I, it's something I'm I'm happy to to approve and when we get to public comment, I'll I'll read the Mitchell's letter.
Yeah, I'd I'd be ready to make a motion along those lines.
Yeah, so would I.
All right, so I'm gonna, if you would stop sharing, I just need to go
Yeah.
to our script. Great. All right, Kathy, can you see the script?
I can. Thank you very much, Joe. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom marketing, excuse me, meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use a platform, you may press star nine or to raise your hand, or you may send your questions to staff via email at backbayac@boston.gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person and should be focused on a project's exterior architectural features, which includes landscaping. Issues related to use, street traffic and noise are outside of the commission's purview. And Joe, did you want to read the Mitchell, the Mitchell's note to start?
Yeah, yeah. So this is from Tim Mitchell. Um, as adjoining property owners and residents Dell and Tim Mitchell support the rear yard gate proposed for eighteen Commonwealth Avenue with the following suggestions and observations. We understand the revised proposal is as shown on the updated drawings dated December second, twenty twenty-five. It has been a worthy and successful goal of the BBAC to upgrade importance of alley frontage in the district from bare utility. To that end, some additional ornamental patterning should be considered for the metal picket gate panels, a cut plate motif with pickets, uh, something, well, they included an image. Something, well, they included an image and I'll be happy to forward that to David. They write, it is unfortunate for context that the decorative iron balcony at number twenty next door has been omitted from the proposed elevation drawing. Additionally, minimum four inch thick stone might be a more appropriate pier cap and with the top shaped into a shallow pyramid. The cap dimension proposed is thin and seems to suggest wood construction. Both the cap and base material should be referenced such as solid granite and brick for the pier labeled as similar to adjoining. Thank you for, thank you for the opportunity to comment. All right, Serge Savard, would you like to make your comment?
Yes, thank, thank you, Commissioner Serge Savard, co-chair of the Architecture Committee for Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. We did see the applicant. We are, we don't, do not oppose this gate. We're pleased to see that the gate has been moved a little bit back because we want people not only to be able to have something that looks nice, but also that they can enjoy and that is functional. So that was important that people can get in and get out of their parking. And regarding the piers, we had some discussion also about the piers. So I think having some cap would be nice. Regarding the motif of the fence, I would say that our committee was on the fence on this one. We didn't want to go with something really, really fancy, but we did find this a little bit simple, but we don't, we don't want to have a very, very elaborate design. And we think that the super elaborate, the, the nice elaborate that is behind it would have been too much for this gate. So maybe an, an interface between the two, uh, uh, middle ground would be, would be appropriate. Thank you.
All right. And Tim Mitchell, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Oh, okay. So I would just like to support Dell and I would just like to support this application. David's made some nice modifications from the beginning of the proposal and the discussion about some simple elaboration of the, the ironwork, I think would be just fine. Probably we would also suggest that there not be lighting on the top of the, on the top of the pier. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. I don't see anybody else. That's it? Okay. Great. So shall we head back to the motion?
Yeah, shall I?
Yes.
Motion that the application be approved with the proviso that the final design of the gate and fence is to be modified to be more decorative, complementing the ironwork of abutting buildings and that the pier caps are to be modified as discussed at the hearing with the final design approved by staff.
Second. All right. And that second was Rob Weintraub. Kathy Connor?
Yes.
Gina Demetriades?
Yes.
Rob Weintraub?
Yes.
David Simpson?
Yes.
Tom Hi?
Yes.
Tom DiNer?
Yes.
Susannah Gashpar?
Yes.
Franklin Ross?
Yes.
And Lisa Thor.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Thanks, David. We'll, we'll be in touch.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thank you to David. All right, we're moving on to our next application, twenty six point oh four eight seven BB. That's three oh two Beacon Street. Is there someone here to present for three oh two Beacon Street, please?
Doug Mills, I think I made you a co-host, sure. No, no, I didn't. All right, Doug, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Doug Mills for MCA. Hello. Uh, sorry, Joe, did you?
Great, great. Yeah, I will just read my staff comments. And do you want to share your screen or do you want me to go through?
I can share mine.
Okay, all right. Let me read my comments. So the work here, the applicant is requesting to amend the commission's twenty twenty three approval that required replacement of the existing stonework below the front facades first story windows with brick. The applicant seeks to retain the existing stonework in place. Staff notes that three oh two Beacon Street was constructed as a single family house in eighteen sixty nine to eighteen seventy and remodeled in its colonial revival style appearance with its front entrance relocated to the lower level in nineteen thirty two. In twenty twenty three, the commission approved relocating the entrance portico to the first floor, provided that the stone cladding below the first story windows would be replaced with brick matching the existing brick at the front facade. The applicant is requesting retaining the existing stone cladding because of difficulty finding brick. I just want to show a few photos. Here is, and again, thank you for Tom Hi and Back Bay Houses dot org for all these wonderful images and the histories that you provide us. This is what the
Joe, did you?
The house looked like before it was altered in nineteen thirty.
Yeah, Joe, you haven't shared.
I will, like, yep, let me just go through these photos. And then here, you know, here is what we have before work had taken place and what was approved was for this portico to be moved to the story. And this is what we have now. My recommendation is approval, finding that replacing the nineteen thirty store stonework with brick is not
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we just didn't have the visual, Joe, and it just popped in.
Yeah, what we have now.
I'll just go on. Staff recommends approval, finding that replacing the nineteen thirty two stonework with brick is not restoring the facade to any historic appearance and will result in the loss of historic building fabric that while not original is over ninety years old. So staff supports leaving the stonework in place.
Hey, Doug, it's all yours.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I think Joe kind of summed it up pretty well for me. I, I agree with Joe and I, I feel like this should be approved as well. It's, it, you know, we are, we've been disappointed with the ability to find matching brick. I have another picture that I could share of the side of the, the new steps here that were supposed to match the front facade and it's, I, I'm really disappointed in how it came out. Let me just share that real quickly. So as you can see, it's the, the brick above is a much tighter grout line. The color of the brick is close enough, but you know, I, I would hate to take this stonework off the front facade and then have something worse take its place. So it would be great if we could get your approval tonight.
Can I, can I ask a question or two? Because this is, to me, this is very disappointing. You know, when, when we first approved this, part of the concept was to improve the consistency and sympathy with the, the other, the architecture of the other buildings on the street. I went back and I listened to the hearings back on March and April of twenty twenty three. And the point was made very clearly that as presented, it would achieve a great deal of successful integration with the other buildings on the block. Not, the idea was not to restore the original facade that was replaced in nineteen thirties, but to take the nineteen thirties facade, remove the parts that were so jarring, which include the brick underneath the, the window and bring it back to something that was more sympathetic to the streetscape. And we looked at it twice, both in March and April of twenty twenty three, and we had your assurance that, you know, this was part of your proposal and you supported it. We looked at it again last month and we passed a motion that said that the brick was going to be replaced underneath the, the window with the selection of brick to be confirmed by Joe. Now, you know, the issue I think is exactly what you say. Is it possible to replace the brick in a way which is not going to be jarring, that is consistent and matches to the extent possible, the existing brick above. And I know that's a challenge. But I'd like to know the extent to which you have looked into that because you know, I've spoken with a couple of masons who, of course, they, they're always optimistic when you're talking to them. But they, they seem to think that this is possible. It may be expensive, but it is possible to do. So tell me in more detail, if you would, what exactly you've done, how many masons you've talked to and so forth.
Well, to, to, to start off, I can assure you that this is not a, a financial decision whatsoever. You know, our clients have gone above and beyond with restoring the interior of this building with restoring the steps to the front, to the, to the first floor rather than the basement level in the hopes of making this a, a much more grand entrance to the, for the home. So, you know, this is definitely not a financial matter whatsoever. In terms of masons, you know, I'm, I'm the architect, not the contractor. So I, I can't tell you off the top of my head how many masons he's talked to. The gentleman that was doing the, the masonry seems capable and obviously he, he.
He didn't, he didn't do a very good job from your point.
Well, well, on the, on the brick itself, I was disappointed. But as far as recreating, so the, the entrance that you see in this photo is not the original entrance. He had to recreate that entire element, you know, from cast concrete. So he is skilled in that, in that way, but I, I, I do have to admit that I'm disappointed by the, the brick work. That being said, in terms of how we got here, I, I looked back through the record myself and I saw that we, we did get approval originally with the, the brick under the windows. And that's what was shown on the BBAC approval. And somehow I, I honestly can't even tell you how this happened, but the drawings are reverted back to the, the stonework. And I, I, you know, I'm the only one that has worked on this as far as CAD drawing, so I have to fall on the sword myself and say that this was an error that I made and I, to this day, can't explain how it happened. So it's not contractor's fault either. He's going by my drawings and my drawings showed the stonework staying in place. So, you know, two and a half years into construction, this just came up at the, at the NAVB meeting. So that's really the first that, the first thing to bring this to my attention.
So this isn't, this isn't because you can't match the stone. It's because you've got the point.
Well, but since, since finding out about that, we have talked to the contractor about matching the brick and he is not confident in it and I'm not confident in it myself.
Have you presented brick samples to Joe for review as we requested? Usually, usually what, what happens when it's something like this is the commission, you know, the, has sees onsite a sample of the bricks, put, you know, a small section of brick to see and compare. And we've done that in a number of different properties over the years. And if you found a mason who could come close, wouldn't that be worth doing? Because if you look at the two drawings, your original drawing, the one we approved is clearly much more attractive and consistent and balanced than what you've got today.
I, I totally agree, Tom, and I think that it's worth pursuing because it does look like the facade as proposed is a bit of a Band-Aid. You know, and once we raise the stair entrance back to where it would have been originally, we need to let go of, of some of those alterations that went along with lowering the entrance to the street level. Having experience with using reclaimed brick and, and I think Doug, you mentioned this, a lot of times the, the key is in the grout spacing and the widths of the grout and the pointing in addition to working with reclaimed brick that can be found potentially that is a closer match. So I, I do agree with Tom that I think it's worth going back to do another round of feasibility study and sampling.
Okay. Thank you, Serge.
I'd be ready to make a motion.
We haven't opened up the public comment yet.
Yeah.
All right, all right. I, and I'm having a little computer problem, so that's why my
Oh, oh dear.
camera is off. So let me just get to our, if you could stop sharing your screen, I'm just going to bring up our script. All right, Kathy, can you read that?
I can too, but just a moment, I'm sure. Thank you. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment and applications and discussions. Should you so, please raise, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform if you're calling in and cannot use the platform. You may press star nine to raise your hand, or you may send your questions to staff via email at backbayac@boston.gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person and should be focused on a project's exterior architectural features, which includes landscaping. Issues related to use, street traffic and noise are outside of the commission's purview. Now, Serge.
Yes, thank, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. I would have to make two points in a comment. Number one, it's, it, we, I would like to recall the, the meeting that we had originally when this proposal was done, because one of the, the issues we had, we basically recreated on this, on this project, a design that never existed before. We didn't go to the original design and that was not the nineteen twenty five. So this design was the interpretation of what the designer in nineteen twenty five would have done if you would have had a stair that would have a, a view. So we don't really have an historic representation to do that. But what the commission came at that time was the best interpretation of what the architect in nineteen twenty five would have done. The problem that I see not continuing with the original proposal of the, of the approval of the, the BBAC from that time is the commission decisions that are given are not really a buffet. It's not that, that people can pick and choose what they want to implement. It's a complete review and the whole procedure should be done. I don't think that the, at least the architect here had any malice in this. It could be an honest mistake that happened and now needs to be corrected. It happened that during our review, we noticed that on the drawing. We thought it was a drawing issue, not really a, that we think that the project was not finished. But if the commission would approve this and I think it would, she, the commission should be worried of the precedent that it would do in the messaging to other applicants in the future that basically you can get approved for something and it's not then get done. You, you approved it another time, it gets rejected, but the third time it may get approved actually. So we may have actually now create a sequence of, of requests over and over again to get things approved, which I don't think would be what the commission would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Serge.
I, I just would like to, is, can I jump in Kathleen or?
Yes, feel free.
Yeah, no, I just, I think that
Yes, Franklin.
what, what Joe has, has said is, is fair to consider, which is, you know, that these guys have done a lot of work. They've come back, they've been above board. This is, this to me is not a a big change. And looking through the, through, through the sort of street not, it's not like there's an exact line of brick across each of these buildings. And it's not that there is an exact, this is not going back to an exact historic original, nor can it because of the changes that, that have been sort of made over the years. So I just I would I don't know if it's if going back and asking them to take the stone out and put brick in for this little piece is really doing much here.
Thank you, Franklin.
Great. Thank you, Franklin. I, I, you know, I do want to say, you know, I just want to add, you know, this is not a violation. You know, this is the process of, you know, as projects move forward, just as the previous application, there are changes that happen. This is a big enough change where it's been brought back to the commission. And again, it's, you know, I I read what my recommendation was and that's, you know, after you see work in progress. You can see onsite and get a different opinion possibly of what was approved initially.
And I think, you know, just to respond to that, Joe, I I agree that, you know, there has to be some some deviation or some flexibility. In this particular case, the what is there, what's left there is really not architecturally appropriate. It may be necessary to leave it, but I don't think that enough work has been done to take this seriously. So that's why my motion will be to continue this and ask for onsite. Evaluation of the best possible. Brick, matching brick, and also perhaps to look at alternatives like putting in a string course that would separate the brick above from the brick below the window. String course at the base of the window, so that if there is a little deviation in the style of the brick, your eye doesn't see it as much. I don't know if that works or not.
But what are you, what are you, so just so I understand clearly, the the reason why. We're going back and asking them to. Alter this again is the original approved version had the brick below the window.
That's correct. This, and we've, we've, we've considered it three times now. And the commission has voted for the brick below the line, below the window all three times. The only basis that I can see for not doing that is that if it is actually in fact not possible to match the bricks efficiently, so that it looks like a, you know, a a modern rebuilding of the brick, then perhaps we should leave the stone. But I I don't think we're at that point yet. I don't think that enough. Serious work has been done by the applicant to satisfy at least me.
I I I agree with Tom, having done many of these restorations in my forty year career. There's a company called Spalding Brick Company in Wilmington. They can pretty much match any historic brick within ninety percent. Any any masonry contractor in in Back Bay would know that. So I'm going to have to concur with Tom that the excuse of not finding matching brick is not viable. At least where from where I sit.
Prior to Tom's, prior to Rob's comments, I have to agree with Tom. I I don't think that, I don't think we've gotten there yet. I mean, Joe, you haven't even received any bricks to even choose from or decline. We got to have that option and that's what they agreed to in as Tom.
What we have now, though, what we have. What we have now is, you know, if you can see the image, you know, we can see what it looks like with the stonework in place. I think you need to take that into consideration as well.
That's why I've made the motion, or will make the motion, because I don't think what's there now. Looks very good. It looks very, it looks like, as as Lisa said, the a Band-Aid stuck on it.
They have JW Masonry, which is a very reputable masonry contractor. They they buy a lot of their brick from Spalding. So I I I would go back to them and just say, listen, have you checked with Spalding? So.
And get us some samples, get some samples for Joe to look at.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. All right.
Let's move on. Three times.
Laurie, you should be unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm speaking strictly as a neighbor here, not representing the neighborhood association. I've lived in this neighborhood for forty five years now and I'm not an architectural historian or an expert, but I feel I've lived here long enough to absorb the style of architecture that is characteristically Back Bay. And when I looked at this building before it was renovated, what I saw was a very coherent nineteen twenties design that was beautiful and unique in its own way. Adding the staircase to it permanently altered it and and made it strange because the rest of the nineteen twenties elements were were preserved. And now removing that bit of masonry under the window is is going to help slightly, but very importantly, try to give some coherence to that new staircase, which to me is off in its proportions and peculiar in so many ways. I mean, those little blocks above the capitals, those skinny little spindles in what should be some type of balcony, but isn't quite. I think anything that can be done to try to bring this building back to the original proposal that was approved three times would be a would be a great help because at this point, this is the building that architecture students are going to look at and say, what did they do here and why did they do it? And I don't think that's something that the owners are are going to appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Joe, I don't see any other comments. Do you? Public comments?
No, but I do have, I received written comment.
Great, thank you.
I didn't have a chance to share, so. Dear Commissioner, this is from, let me see, Alice Murphy. Dear Commissioners, despite your best efforts, the reconstruction of the stoop on three O two Beacon Street looks even worse than I'd imagined it might. Thanks to the builders not following the plans and the architects disregarding historic design conventions. The building has lost its architectural integrity. It's gone from a fairly consistent design to a weird mishmash of elements which are poorly proportioned and don't fit together coherently. The assemblage of the floating balcony no longer tethered to a window sitting over what should be an architrave, but is just open space, is made worse by the vestigial masonry which used to tie. Everything together on the lower level, but now creates a random line through the stoop, which is itself too heavy. I expected this to be heard in the violation segment. Please, please make them fix the facade rather than capitulate and make sure they work to match the brick properly. Their behavior has shown disdain for both the commission and the historic preservation in general. Thank you for your tireless work, which keeps Back Bay the gem it is. Okay, and Kathy, I think that's all.
Great. Okay, then let's move forward to the motion.
I move that the application be continued to the next meeting to permit the applicant to present onsite to staff and any commissioners who wish to attend examples of the best available bricks in to replace the stonework below the windows.
Second.
Great, and that Lisa Thorpe was the second.
Yes.
Kathy Connor?
Yes.
Gina Demetriades?
Yes.
Rob Weintraub?
Yes.
David Sampson?
Yes.
Tom Hi?
Yes.
Tonvi Nayer?
Yes.
Susannah Gaspard?
Yes.
Franklin Ross?
Yes.
And Lisa Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Doug, we'll be in touch with next steps.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. You too. And then we're moving on to administrative review and approval. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Okay.
Great, and Rob was the second. Kathy Connor?
Yes.
Gina Demetriades?
Yes.
Rob Weintraub?
Yes.
David Sampson?
Yes.
Tom Hi?
Yes.
Tom De Nayer?
Yes.
Susannah Gaspard?
Yes.
Franklin Ross?
Abstain.
And Lisa Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, Joe, did you want to go to staff updates first and then we can move on to the advisory?
Sure, I'll just, you know, for staff updates, our our big update is that we will be moving the office of historic preservation. We're we're moving offices, so we're going to be moving to twenty six Court Street, which is across the street from the Steaming Tettle. So we've been packing all week and hopefully our move will take place. So after the holidays, we should be settled into our new location.
And are you happy about that, Joe? Is that a nice, is that a nice improvement or just a change?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. The building's been completely renovated, so we're excited about it.
Well, that's a terrific way to start off twenty twenty six, so that's great news. Wonderful.
I agree.
Great.
Joe, one thing for Joe, Joe, if you need some commissioner to head over to three O two Beacon to look at the brick samples, just shoot me a message.
Okay, all right, yeah, as soon as, as soon as I have brick samples, I'll I'll send out an email and we can even make it a, you know, a public meeting if we have.
That would be great, yeah.
Joe, it's Rob, do you need me or can I speak myself? But we have, we have an advisory review.
We do, yeah, it's one twenty four.
Beacon Street next, we, we're, we're. We're fine with a quorum, Rob, if you need to go.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Rob, for your help and have a fabulous Christmas.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to head to one twenty four Beacon Street for the advisory. Is there someone here for the advisory, please? Could you identify yourself?
Yes, hi, this is Jahan Mohabaly. I'm here.
Hi, John, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Great, great. So this is going to be, I think you can just get started, Joe, you have no comments to to present. So if you just want to go through it, and Joe, I assume that we're going to do a public comment after the fact?
Yeah. Yes, yeah, I'll I'll just say quickly, staff notes that one twenty, so the 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 project is at the roof renovation of the existing headhouse and installation of a roof deck. Staff notes that one twenty four Beacon Street is a five story stone row house built between eighteen fifty nine and eighteen sixty. The upper level of the rear elevation is a later addition. In March twenty twenty five, the commission approved changes to the windows and roof configuration, which at the rear is the ninth and tenth story of the rear of the building. So with that, would you like to share your screen or do you want me to?
Yes, Joe, that would be, would be great. I actually have some slightly updated, it's based on the feedback we got from NAV. Let me just.
Okay, so I'll stop sharing and you can share your screen.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, let me just move this over. Is everybody able to see the screen?
Great.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just to recap and to bring everybody up to speed. We're specifically talking about the the rear penthouse unit, which which occupies these kind of three and a half or four floors on the rear of one twenty four Beacon facing Back Street. And these are the existing conditions. Previously, when we appeared before the committee a few times to achieve approval, we were given approval to change the rear sliders. This is the existing state. This is what we were given approval for. Altering the rear sliders, the transoms, changing the pitch of the the roof, adding skylights. We did not seek approval to alter the headhouse at that time. And so today, we're, we are in the midst of demolition and renovation of the project and we have noticed substantial issues with the headhouse. And so we are coming back today to discuss potential design options for how we could rebuild this headhouse in an appropriate manner to achieve our goals, but also to to be consistent with what the the Back Bay Architectural Commission would prefer. So these are some images of the headhouse demonstrating the existing conditions. There is an area immediately adjacent to the headhouse. The footprint of the headhouse is about ten feet by ten feet. The adjacent section of flat roof is also ten feet by ten feet and the unit has an exclusive easement to use that area of the roof as a roof deck. Up until this point, it really has not been used because there, one, we we don't have an appropriate roof deck, we don't have railings. And there is no access to this portion of the roof other than through a very precarious wood ladder that gives general access to the roof. So part of our desire to rebuild this structure is to give a true access from the unit to this portion of the roof. Furthermore, as I was up there last week taking some of these pictures, I I placed my hand on the sill of one of these oval windows and literally just turning into powder. And so I I think the entire headhouse needs needs to be replaced. It's in, it's in a really poor state of disrepair. And during the summer months or during the winter months, the temperatures are very extreme because there's essentially no insulation on the interior. In coming up with potential designs, one thing that was obviously very important to us was to not exceed the existing height. There is a domed kind of bubble skylight that sits on top of this headhouse. And so we made sure that the max height of our new design stayed within the boundary of that existing skylight. And again, just to reiterate in section, we're talking about just the headhouse now. Everything else has been previously approved. This is the design that we came up with. This is the existing condition. This is the the new design with a with a railing for the roof deck. I put these reference lines in here to, and this is all drawn to scale to kind of show existing heights and and where they fall on the new design. And again, you can see the top line, we've made sure to to stay within the boundaries. Looking at the footprint, I want to emphasize, we, this is the exact same footprint that is there. This is the immediately adjacent area that we are proposing as a roof deck. And this is the east elevation in in section. Again, what you don't see is the the section of railing that that traverses across here, which would be right here. We've kept that out of the cutout, so you can see the the glazing here. And then finally, the the last thing that I'd like to emphasize is I I know we're focusing a lot on the the design of this and it is important. However, when you look up from Back Street, you don't see any of this. These three D reconstructions are also to scale, drawn from the vantage point all the way up against the railing, the guard railing of Staro Drive. As you can see, you don't, you don't see any of these modifications. And the the one other thing I will just put in here, obviously, we're we're presenting this for an advisory review. We're very open to what suggestions the commissioners have. One thought that we had come up with before in our previous approval, there was a lot of emphasis on preserving the ornate balcony railing that exists. One iter, design iteration had been to simply replicate that ornate railing and move it up. So so we literally would reproduce it. However, some of the feedback that we got from NAV was perhaps that we should stick with a util, a more utilitarian option for the roof deck itself. And that's what we ultimately settled on, but we are open to anything in between as well. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. Is, it's probably just my eyesight, but have the skylights, the three skylights changed in proportion from what was approved? Or are they just, they look squarer and wider than what the original drawing?
I I do not believe they have. This was based on what was originally approved.
Okay. And is the new space, the new headhouse, will that be occupiable space?
No, it 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 really will just serve as an area, you know, to to provide access to the roof deck.
So will you need, you probably won't need zoning then, you know, because you're over height, I think, on this building.
We are over height. My initial discussions with zoning were that because the bill, the total height of the building is is ninety five feet if we include the elevator overrun, which is well over, I believe, the seventy five foot requirements that the building had been grandfathered in a a long time ago. And so we're, and we are, our goal is to not exceed the height that exists.
Yeah, okay, I I think if you had made that occupiable space, you might have had to do that.
How is the roof deck accessed? Is there, is that a standing height or is it shorter?
Yes, let me go back to here. So our our objective was to achieve, you know, it would be great to have a a full height door, a French door, of, you know, six foot eight. However, I think that that would force us to to push the design higher, so we settled on a door of right around six or six foot two.
Okay.
Are those doors, you've got French, sort of French doors, are those, or are there sliders? What are they?
Looks like a hinge door.
Yeah, we we are, we're open to whatever is recommended. I mean, obviously, our our preference would be a sliding door. And one of the feedback points from from NAV was to try and make as much of this glazing on both facades operational to to deal with the the heat issues. So we would certainly love that, but we're we're open to whatever is suggested.
It just, it seems, you know, more glassy than what we normally like to see on a penthouse. Maybe that it's appropriate in this case. I'm not. Uh, maybe that it's appropriate in this case. I'm not sure, but, um, are they, are they true divided lights that you're talking about?
Yes, they would be true divided lights.
And does the front railing run right up against the windows?
It, 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 it does. Um, it essentially, there, there's going to be very, uh, little space there. The, the front railing will sit, you know, maybe three or four inches proud of those windows.
Yeah.
May we see the, the rear elevation again, please?
Of course. Go back. This, this one?
Yes, thank you. So those are also six foot roughly glazed?
Yes.
Windows? Those are windows. They're, are they operable?
They, they are windows. We would be open to having them be, uh, doors or, you know, operable windows, wha- whatever suggested. Um, our, our, our preference would be to gain additional operability if the, if the commission felt that that was appropriate.
What is the distance between that glazing and the front rail?
Um, again, I, I believe we're looking at about three or four inches where the railing, th- there's not substantial space there.
And the reason you're doing that is so that if you open the windows, people don't fall out?
E- exactly. It, it's, it serves two purposes. One is that if we were approved to have those windows be operational or those, those full panels be operational, the railing would serve as a guard. But furthermore, we are sensitive to the fact that we're include, uh, increasing the amount of glazing on this facade, even though it's not visible from Backstreet. And our thought was, uh, one, the railing would be more cohesive if, if it runs across, but in part it also blocks some of that glazing. And so that was a deliberate choice.
On the inside of the headhouse at this elevation, um, is that an open stair? So you can't actually stand and reach those windows to operate?
It, it is not actually, um, a fully open stair. There is a circular staircase that, that comes up through the headhouse. The diameter of the circular staircase is about seven feet. And so because the staircase sits off center within the headhouse, it leaves about a three-foot um, area, which right now consists of just sort of a sitting platform where there's some cushions and things like that. Uh, and, and so we would be preserving that interior. There, there would be a small platform area there.
So the platform is at these front, this front glazing?
Correct.
And so if they were operable, would they need to be like double hungs? Because you don't have enough room really for casements.
I think the ideal situation or what we were hoping for envisioning would, would, would potentially be that they would be hinged doors or sliders.
Oh, sliders.
Joe, Joe, haven't we generally not approved sliders? Or am I not remembering correctly?
Yeah, no, I mean, we usually don't approve sliders, but I think I don't think that's what he said he was proposing here. He said hinged, didn't you?
He, he said hinged or sliders and, and so I, you know, I, I think hinged is more what, more consistent with what we've, we've, um, done. Um, and usually we like to see a bit more substance between, between doors. Um, I understand why you want to have that much glass facing the, the water, but.
I agree with you that there's a lot of glass and there's a lot of cacophony kind of from level to level to level. So ob- obviously you don't see it. Looking at it in elevation is very, uh, you know, misconstrued because that doesn't actually exist as such. Uh, but there is a lot of glass, uh, you're gonna have it on all three floors. That actually is going to give you a little bit of, you know, thermal insulation problems. Anyway, I do agree with the casement, especially if you consider having to clean these windows. I mean, with sliders, just, it's just impossible. Um, but I think it might merit to just look at, you know, how you think about, uh, integrating the, uh, windows with whatever is below it, even though you don't see it.
Which makes me wonder if, you know, mimicking a little bit of the original ovals, if we just had, for example, three squares um, up there instead of the full height, might feel more consistent with the transoms, uh, to level, you know, below the, the shed roof. Just as a, as another thought.
That's a good thought.
I also think that this simple railing is a whole lot better than having to, you know, replicating that very ornate presence twice.
Yes.
It's, you know, it kind of takes away from the original beauty of, you know.
Could we look at the side elevation again, please? The a- the access door to the roof deck? So currently you have the fenestration is just two oval windows and then a little like weird Palladian.
Exactly. It's like a vinyl.
Hatch.
Yeah. And it's not even a functional hatch. There's no way to, uh, egress through it, so. Yeah, I can go back to the first image if that's helpful where it shows that.
Yeah. I mean, here, here again, you're, I mean, it, it's a little bit like creating a glass box up here, which as far as insulation, heat gain and you've already got kind of that conservatory, uh, skylight style skylight in your plan now.
I was wondering, is that a skylight or is that just a copper roof? That's really a skylight?
This is a, this is a, a large skylight. Uh, i- and the dimensions of the skylight sit right over the spiral staircase. So that gives you a sense of, um, the, the sort of diameter of this spiral staircase coming up into the, the headhouse.
Well, your skylight is actually a pyramid, right? At least based on the roof, roof plan?
Correct.
So it's almost like nine foot by nine foot. So yes, there is a lot of glazing here, top and bottom and left and right.
It's basically, you're creating almost a greenhouse effect up here at the top. So I'm just.
We, we've worked with, um, with, uh, an HVAC engineer to, to, uh, determine that, you know, appropriate R values for the glazing. Um, and then also we will be putting probably a, a small, um, mini split um, in, in, in the, the headhouse specifically to address the unique heating and cooling needs. Um, so we, we have thought about all that.
I think just looking at the proportions of the proposed glass, I'm, uh, having some issues of how I would detail it being an architect, you know, what's above it and whether you can actually do it without having jam conditions in between the glass. So I think for a lot of reasons, having uh, thicker jams where you can have some structural capacity in between those three or two, um, windows or doors, whatever those are, end up being, um, I think would help
Yes.
With detailing and proportion and just solidity of this thing.
Yeah, I agree.
So are we in agreement, commissioners, that we think that there's too much glass at the very top there that we need to think about reducing it? Is that, is that the direction we're going in?
I think given the, I think it's, we are at some risk of setting a precedent here because a lot of other roof deck headhouse projects, um, with a lot of glazing have been rejected.
That's right.
And I think that, you know, there has to be good reason to dramatically increase glazing in a situation like this, you know, understanding that if it's falling apart, it needs to be addressed for sure. Um, but it, the dramatic increase in glazing does concern me as a, as a precedent.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
I'll just second what Lisa said.
May I ask just stylistically, these oval?
I would just add, I mean, it sounds like the commissioners are.
Oops. Joe, we, okay. Okay, Susanna, did you want to continue? Oh, here's Joe again. Okay, Joe?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Suzanne. You could go. I would just wanted to say it, it sounded like commissioners were in support of the roof deck. I mean, I think that's the other piece.
Yeah. I was just wondering how other, you know, how you all thought about this stylistic change from something that is very quirky and non his, non kind of contextual in this area, but existing to something that is so much more glassy and predictable and, and kind of nondescript. I haven't yet made up my mind about it, so I'm just wondering.
Susanna, I, if I, you know, if I owned this, I'd want to create, recreate the, the oval windows and so forth, but, you know, I, I think I would be in the minority on that.
There's something, you know, exciting about it, especially with the, uh, you know, the, uh, edge glass. It seemed to me with those. Yeah, patterns.
Well, it feels a bit Mansard roof-esque, uh, but.
But that's, yeah, that really is, you know, sort of my, my taste.
Yeah, that's an aesthetic.
Yeah, exactly.
I think I'm more concerned with the glazing, the percentage of glazing precedent, uh, at this point, because I, I do feel that stylistically, this is, this is, um, it's fine. I think the, the conservatory style skylight is, um, is fine. Uh, so yeah, I'd love to hear other comments.
I think in part we were also thinking or, or looking to reference the, the transoms down below, but certainly we would be open to any other design suggestions. I think at one, one point we had considered replicating something quirky, maybe, maybe putting arches on top of, um, the uh, the windows. Um, and i- if I might suggest maybe a potential intermediary, would, would the commission be open to the idea of if we make much wider jams and reduce the glazing, but allow the windows to be more or the panels to be more functional, um, for purposes of use of the space. So for example, something intermediary like, um, an accordion type door panel where when they open up, they, they push to the side, but they have much thicker jams. And when they're closed, they, they, they look, you know, true divided light with very thick jams and decrease the amount of glazing. But in exchange, there's much more functionality in terms of the way they can be opened and pushed to the side.
Joe, what do you think?
Well, do you have the wrong for that?
You know, look at other options, you know, certainly, you know, again, this is advisory. So I think, you know, you're getting some avenues to explore.
And i- in regarding the glazing, uh, i- with the ovals overall, I, Tom, you made it clear that you were leaning in that direction. Are there any other?
Yeah, please understand, I'm not, I'm not leaning in that direction. I don't think in the sense that I want them to keep the ovals. I was commenting that, you know, if I were doing it, I would because it's just a matter of taste, but, but the fact that there is more material and less window, I think is the point.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
I also think that divorcing the style of the, um, the north facade from the east facade could be just something that you consider so that you might want to have a lot of glazing to, you know, facing towards the roof deck because there's actually a reason for that. But not necessarily have the same thing happening on the, uh, north facade, the, you know, the, uh, rear elevation essentially. So I'm not sure that those two really need to look as, um, tethered to each other as they do now in your proposal.
Any other comments, commissioners? And any other details? Are you, uh, comfortable with where we've landed so far for the advisory?
Um, just, yeah, I, I think, I didn't see it in what you presented here, but I thought there was a drawing that showed the location of the HVAC units. Are you making any changes in those that would affect the visibility at all? I, I don't think you are, but I.
No, no, uh, at, at most, thi- this is actually right here. This is the HVAC unit that belongs, uh, to the, the entire penthouse, all, all three floors. Um, it's possible that, that a- as we move along, we may, uh, change this for a more efficient, um, uh, system, uh, but that would, we would make sure that that would occupy the same footprint or a smaller footprint than, than what is there. And, and if it's not going to, there, there's not a lot of, of point in changing it anyway.
Very good.
Anything else?
I think maybe we should open up the public comment.
I think that's great.
Okay. Right. Kathy, can you see the script?
I cannot. I can see the, uh, little penthouse there. That's about it.
The penthouse, yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
Almost there. Here we are. Thank you, Joe. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. Should you so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you may press star nine to raise your hand, or you may send your questions to staff via email at backbayac@boston.gov. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per person and should be focused on a product, project's exterior architectural features, which includes landscaping. Issues related to use, street traffic and noise are outside of the commission's purview. Do we have any public comment? I don't see any, Joe. Oh, there we are, Serge. Sorry, just sorry.
No problem. Uh, first, I would like to, uh, to commend, uh, the applicant here for the work they have done. Uh, the, uh, Jahan is a, is not an architect, is the owner. And I think if all owners would present and have that a detailed discussion, I think with this, something with the BBAC and, uh, the neighborhood would, would appreciate from all owners. So I think it's great to have this. Uh, we, we, I, from what I saw in this drawing, we think that this, uh, new, um, balcony railing is better because it's, uh, it's a little bit more in style with what the commission has approved for decks across the, uh, uh, across the, uh, the platform. We don't oppose the deck because it's within the guidelines and it's a, a small in space and it seems to meet, uh, the normal, uh, requirements for the size of the guidelines. Uh, our main thing was, uh, there's a lot of, as the commission, as highlighted, there was a lot of glass. Uh, I don't think the, uh, the number, the amount of glass on the east, although it will create a, a lot of heat gain from the east, uh, i- is as problematic or as, uh, something that the commission should really pay more attention than the one on the north side, although we will not be visible from, uh, from Backstreet. And, uh, uh, I can confirm, I did, uh, see, we've gone on site and go to the store drive railing. It's not visible. Uh, but from, obviously from the Espinad, it's, it's still visible. It's not really in, in, in this space, but it, it would be to be at least consistent. So one thing that was done in the, in for other, uh, proposal was to have French doors, so two side by side and then a significant portion of, of material, so maybe a foot, a foot and a half, and then another window. I believe there was a couple of, uh, headhouse, uh, uh, penthouse and headhouse that have been done that way. So that's another proposal that would be, is would be to have two panels that are very close that are really French doors. And then the next one would be a window. Thank you.
Thank you, Serge. Anybody else, Joe? I don't see.
Not seeing anyone else.
All right, great. So I think that, any, any final comments, commissioners, or, or, are we, uh, through with our advisory?
Think we're through.
Great. I hope that was helpful. Um, and thank you everyone, uh, for contributing your ideas and thoughts. And Jahan, I, I wish you luck when you're coming to present in front of us.
Thank you.
All right. And do we have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Beautiful. I hope you all have a fabulous holiday and thank you so much for your dedication throughout twenty twenty five and onward to twenty twenty six.
Thank you.
Appreciate how you do. Thank you. Bye bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, Joe. Thanks.